Okay, we are right now.
We're live?
Yep.
Already. Good evening, everyone. This is it's time to convene our regularly scheduled board meeting. Would everybody like to join me in standing, making the appropriate move and helping recite the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, everybody, for attending this meeting. Before we do the roll call, just want to remind all the board members that when your name is called, if you would please announce whether or not you're attending in person or be a remote. And also, too, at the same time with the other people, just acknowledge that they are able to hear them properly. So if we're ready, can we go on to start with the roll call?
Andy Graham.
Here, remote.
John Brotherton.
Here, remote.
Bill Sweat.
Here, and I'm in the facility and remote.
Mark Keys. Joan Fitzgerald.
I'm present and I'm remote.
Joe Robinson.
Here, remote.
Sandra Ulot.
Here, remote.
So it looks like we have a quorum, so we can go in and schedule, have this meeting. Also, to just remind all the board members that all the action taken tonight, our voting will be roll call votes. Next item on the agenda is item number two. It's an action item. It's the agenda approval. I have all the board members had an opportunity to review the agenda. And if so, if anyone has any recommendations on anything to be removed or altered, if not, then would someone care to make the motion to the approve the agenda as presented?
Bill, I just would say that if nobody has concerns from last month and I talked to you last night, I talked to Michelle and I don't think we need a closed agenda unless, closed session unless somebody has something difficult that they want to talk about. Michelle said she had no personnel to talk about yesterday when I spoke with her, so I don't think we need a closed session, sign off and sign on in a different remote room. Not a big fan of closed sessions on Zoom anyways.
Okay. So how do the other board members feel? Agenda as amended by removing closed session, which is items number, it'll be items number seventeen and items number eighteen.
We had two closed session items on there?
Yeah, you have the closed session and you had a
No, the reconvene.
Reconvene.
Okay, my fault. Yeah, I'll make that motion, Bill. I'll make the motion that we approve the agenda, taking out items number seventeen and eighteen from the agenda, closed session and reconvene it up closed session.
Okay, so the motion was made by Mr. Graham. Anyone care to second?
I second it.
Seconded by Mr. Robinson, and we'll need a roll call vote.
Graham.
Aye.
Ulot.
Aye.
Brotherton.
Aye.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Sweat.
Aye. Okay, and it looks like it's unanimous, so the agenda approved as amended. That moves us on to item number three is public forum, and it doesn't look like we've had anybody here for public forum. So we'll move on to item number four, it's an action item. It's a consent agenda items. The items that we considered are first, board meeting minutes for March 11th, 2021, opening closed session minutes. Second item is bills and treasuries report. And see, we did have some donations where RCS staff raised $300 for autism program at T U of I. Any board members have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding these items? If not, then would someone care to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda items as amended.
Well.
Presented.
Okay, so Mr. Graham has made a motion to approve the consent agenda items to include ratification of bill's prepaid by the finance manager under board policy for fifty. Anyone care to second?
I second it.
Seconded by Joe Robinson, and we'll need a roll call vote, please.
Ulot.
Aye.
Keys, I'm sorry, Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Brotherton.
Aye.
Sweat.
Aye. And it looks like that's unanimous, motion carries, so the consent agenda items have been approved. We don't need to go to item five because nothing was removed from the consent agenda, so that moves us on to item number six. It's an action item. It's the personnel report. And our superintendent, Ms. McRamage.
Yes.
Ready?
Tonight, we have joined us, they've joined us on our, there we go, on our screen. We have two assistant principals that we have hired. One has already been hired by the board, but we invited her to come tonight so that they can be introduced to the board. Usually, we do this in person, so tonight's a little unique with Zoom. So I will start with Deandre Henderson. The staff and students at JW Ader are excited to introduce and welcome the newest member of our team and our new assistant principal, Mr. Deandre Henderson. Most recently, Mr. Henderson has served as associate principal at Parkside Junior High School in Normal Unit Five School District. Prior to Normal, Mr. Henderson worked in both Urbana 116 and Champagne Unit Four as student interventionist and special education teacher respectively. Originally from Macomb, Illinois, he attended Knox College in Galesburg and began his teaching career in the Galesburg School District. He has earned two master's degrees from Western Illinois University, one in education and one in educational leadership. He impressed our interview team throughout our hiring process and shared the following, and I'm sharing the following information about himself in his initial application letter. As an educator, I have always had a passion for working with high needs and at-risk students. This led me to work in alternative education and later to become a certified special education teacher. I have always believed in a holistic approach to education, which focuses on meeting all students' needs in the educational setting. This includes crafting relationships with students and infusing social emotional content into curriculum. My experiences working with individual education plans and connecting community resources to students who need them were two ways in which I am looking forward to working with a diverse student population in Rancho and being able to affect change. I'm especially excited about working with the staff at JW Ader, who have been more than welcoming during my visit. And the staff and students at JW Ader are also thrilled to bring Mr. Henderson into our school community, where we look forward to him challenging us to meet the needs of all our students through this holistic approach. Mr. Henderson resides in Champagne County and is the father of one, so welcome to RCS.
Thank you so much. Looking forward to working in Rancho City School District.
Thank you, Deandre. And next we have Jamie Bezier, and she has already been hired by the board, as I said, but we would like to introduce her to you. Jamie is excited to join our Eastlon team next year as the assistant principal. She will be replacing Sammy Sebastian, our new Pleasant Acres principal due to her retirement. Back to Jamie, having grown up in the area, she is eager to continue her professional education career here at Rancho City Schools and have a positive impact on the mission to empower students through engaging opportunities to learn and grow. Jamie comes to us from Mohammed, Illinois, where she spent the last eight years as a Spanish teacher. During her time, she taught Spanish levels one through three to students between eighth and twelfth grade and also worked collaboratively with her Spanish department to rewrite their program curriculum based on current and authentic resources. Jamie also served on a variety of committees, including the District Technology Committee, the World Language Vertical Alignment Team, and the Diversity Group. In 2018, Jamie presented at the Illinois Conference for Teachers of World Languages on creative ways to formatively assess student language proficiency. That same year, she graduated from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign with her master's in teacher leadership and administration. Outside of the school building, Jamie enjoys spending time with her family and staying active. Her husband, Brian, is also an educator at Mohammed Seymour High School, as well as the assistant varsity baseball coach. They have two daughters. Olivia is six years old and attends kindergarten, and Amelia is five years old and is in pre-kindergarten. Welcome to RCS, Jamie. Thank you. I'm so excited to be here with you all.
Thank you.
And that is all I have besides the personnel report, of course.
Any board members have any questions, comments, or like say anything to the, to the newbies?
Just like to welcome both of them and looking forward to working with both of them as we move forward.
Thank you, you as well.
Anybody else here?
I taught in the district for thirty-two years, and it's a wonderful place to work. I hope you enjoyed as much as I did.
Any other comments?
Welcome to the district and looking forward to working with you.
Anybody else? If not, then thank you both and welcome aboard. Best of luck to both of you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. So with those two, as the board members have a chance to review the personnel report, and if anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns, that can be addressed during open session. If not, then would someone care to make a motion to approve the personnel report?
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel report.
As presented, including the stipulation that each individual is required to comply with all requirements for new hires as indicated in Illinois statutes and RCS board policy and procedures. Made by Ms. Fitzgerald. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
That was Mr. Graham, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Graham was, did the second, and we need a roll call vote, please.
Robinson.
Aye.
Brotherton.
Aye.
Ulot.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Sweat.
Aye. And it looks like it's unanimous, motion carried, and the personnel report has been approved as presented. This moves on to item number seven. It's an action item. It's regarding the Social Equity Working Group. It's for academics, and Dr. Woods will do the presentation.
Yes, give me one minute to bring over the folks that are here.
Okay.
To the presenter side. I've got to, hopefully don't miss anybody. Should be joining us is Dolores Lloyd. Melina Thompson.
Hello, I didn't realize my camera's off.
Dolores and Melina are presenters this evening. Also, part of this group is Nikki Pettit. She's joining by phone, so she might not be saying much.
Okay.
And so Amy Blomberg, there you are, Amy. Okay, I think I've got everybody who is here, right?
Is Kevin Williams here?
No, and Ms. Mahali is not here either at the moment, so, but they weren't, they weren't the ones actually presenting tonight. All right, so hopefully we're ready. Okay, well, we are really excited to bring our fourth of five working groups from the Social Equity Working Group this evening. This group has two recommendations that they're making to the board for you to approve this evening. And as we showed on that first slide, we, those are the folks who helped create this for this evening. We've already presented disciplinary practices, family, community leadership, and staff recruitment and retention. So this is our fourth piece. And we're going to turn it over. I believe Melina is going to be starting us off.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm going to be talking about comprehensive phonics program. So one of the problems that we have as a district is reading deficits. There is a significant difference in basic reading skills based on racial demographics. As you can see from this two, winter 2019 auto reading scores, broken up by race, there is a large gap between our white students, our multiracial students, African-American students, and Hispanic or Latinx students. This gap is concerning, and I'd like to propose a solution.
Just tell me when to click.
Okay. So reading data, and this was the auto reading data, which looks at basic reading skills, phonological and phonemic awareness, and I'll go more into that explanation in a minute. But reading data shows that Hispanic, African-American, and multiracial students perform lower on reading assessments and benchmarks than their white counterparts. Students performing lower in basic reading skills tend to have a lower performance outcomes in all academic tasks, which may affect their behavior and motivation. Lower reading skill performance also correlates with higher rates of placement in special ed services and may lead to long-term negative outcomes. Next. So some solutions. A research-based structured literacy curriculum that is comprehensive, systematic, explicit, multi-sensual, based on the science of reading and implemented with fidelity. What does this mean? So when you look at this visual here, reading is, successful reading is determined by two things. Decoding skills, which is what we're talking about tonight, that is the structured literacy curriculum that is based on phonics. The ability to decode or break apart words, sound out words, blend words. And a linguistic comprehension, and that equals strong reading comprehension. So you have to have these two components, that decoding ability and that language comprehension ability in order to have a strong reader. We have a program now that addresses that linguistic comprehension piece, but we are not implementing with fidelity a program that, that really addresses that decoding or phonics piece. So through research in the field of neurobiology, we know how people learn to read and that our brains were not designed to read efficiently. Reading does not come naturally to most. As a result, beginning learners require explicit instruction based on a scientific model of reading. Next. So our solutions, district-wide, tier-one structured literacy instruction. It is comprehensive. Beginning at the elementary level and carrying through to the middle school. Again, this is sort of a different picture, but kind of explains the same thing. That language comprehension piece, which includes background knowledge vocabulary, language structures, verbal reasoning, literacy knowledge. Again, we have a program and curriculum that addresses that, but we're missing a implemented mandated program that addresses that word recognition part, which is phonological awareness, decoding, and sight recognition. And you need all of those strands woven together to, to get a skilled reader. Next, Scott. All right, so what our program looks like. Right now, we have a balanced literacy approach. Again, that addresses primarily that reading comprehension or that linguistic comprehension piece, and we have that. And balanced literacy is designed to address higher concept, more complex reading skills, such as whole word, connected reading, reading comprehension, and vocabulary knowledge. It's a necessary part of having a skilled reader. It focuses primarily on skills necessary to master, master language comprehension, which is that, that part of the strand in Scarborough's rope, that visual that we just looked at. Five components of balanced literacy, which is what we use to address those language comprehension pieces, include read alouds, guided reading, shared reading, independent reading, and word study. And you will see these things being practiced in our classroom and practiced well in our classrooms. So we have that balanced literacy part that addresses that language comprehension. What we're missing is on the left side, that phonics part. So phonics is designed to address the foundational elemental skills that require mastery before you move on to a higher level, more complex reading skills like the balanced literacy. Focuses primarily on word recognition, decoding ability. So that strand of Scarborough's rope, that visual again that we just looked at. A scope and sequence based on developmentally acquired letter sounds and how they can be manipulated to encode and decode or read, reading and spelling increasingly complex words. Next. So some possible solutions. Continued frequent, ongoing structured literacy training and opportunities for collaboration for all staff involved in reading education district-wide. And this is a quote from Donna Who, Haiti, and Ellis in 2018. Collective teaching efficacy is the number one factor in influencing student achievement. We need the teachers to be trained in this from kindergarten and pre-K all the way through middle school. We should all be trained in how to provide those basic reading services. Next. Recommendations for the district. We recommend, as part of this group, we recommend that we adopt and implement kindergarten through eighth grade structured literacy curriculum that focuses on the science of reading and designed to teach basic reading skills with an evidence-based scope and sequence. We also would like it to be ensured that through, through the district improvement team, that the district is implementing this district-wide systematic phonics instruction and implementing it with fidelity. We'd also like to provide ongoing explicit training to teachers, including literacy specialists, instructional coach, building administrators, service providers, everyone that has anything to do with reading, we think should be continually trained. And they should be trained around phonemic awareness and instructional strategies to import, to support phonemic awareness. We would also like to see screening for all students for phonological deficits kindergarten through eighth grade. Board action request. The action that we are requesting the board takes, the board directs the superintendent to continue ongoing work to strengthen reading instruction, including explicit instruction with phonics that is implemented with fidelity. This includes ensuring the district is implementing a district-wide systematic phonics instruction program and continuing to improve supports for students to improve overall reading proficiency and update the board at least twice annually on the progress of information of this work, implementation of this work. And I believe that is all for my
All right, so this is the first recommendation from this group. And I guess one thing I want, we, we had a lot of discussion as a social equity group around this. Overall, what we are looking to do is strengthen the overall phonics instruction that we have. And we say across the district, but you know, you do get the most bang for the buck in your early elementary years. And so we keep saying strengthen, continue. And you know, what the Social Equity Working Group is looking to see is making sure this is happening in all classrooms and happening consistently. Not that none of this is happening, and so, but we do have to do a better job with the phonics piece. The one thing that is, I would say relatively new within this recommendation, new for us, is this piece, I go back one slope, I have too many screens open at home. All right, go back one slide and it's this second bullet, which is ensure through the district improvement team that the district is implementing a district-wide systematic, district-wide systematic phonics instruction. So the equity group felt it was important that there were almost a level of oversight, making sure that it's happening consistently, particularly across the four elementary schools, but also moving up into the, into the junior high. So that is where we are on that. Would anyone else from the group or again, I have too many screens open. I keep clicking on my regular computer. It's right in front of me. Anyone else want to add anything, or do we have any questions from the board?
Dr. Woods, would you, how old is our current reading curriculum? Does anybody know?
For, so the balanced literacy is the instructional model used at the elementary level. I'm going to let Jenny Ferricks hop on and explain what two years, that's the answer.
Okay.
Andy, this is Jenny. So we went through the whole district piloting of new curriculum when I came in. So it's only been two years, and we did the full research on all of the materials that we're using, and these are the so we have all new materials for both literacy and math.
Well, that's why I thought we had done both, right, as I was getting on the board, and I remember that. But is there pieces that we need to add to accomplish some of these to that curriculum, I guess I'm asking?
Well, that's, that's that part I was trying to explain. Scott, if you could go back to the two with the phonics and the balanced literacy. So we are using balanced literacy. That's the Lucy Cockens that we use. That is that balanced literacy piece that, that does address those higher concept skills, reading comprehension, working on word work, increased vocabulary knowledge, those sorts of things. That's the program that we use now, and that does address those issues. What we're suggesting is we have a program called Hagerty, which focuses on phonics. Is, as it's been described to us, if people, the teachers have access to it, but it's not being implemented with fidelity across all classrooms, making sure that it's being used correctly and based on the science of reading. So I'm, we're not suggesting that we buy another program. We're suggesting that we continue to use the balanced literacy to address those reading comprehension parts. The Lucy Cockens continue to use that, but we need to make sure that the phonics skills are being addressed through the Hagerty program that we have, that they are being addressed with fidelity in every classroom, and that someone's overseeing that to make sure that happens, because that's the part we're missing.
Again, I was just making sure that you guys have the tools that you think you need, and you're just making sure everybody's using the tools that you have.
Yes, yeah. We don't want them to just have access to it. We want, we want it to be ensured that they're using it.
I guess that's what I was getting at, is we have this program. Do we need to use it better? Do we need to add to it?
And, and also, to clarify, because I know I've heard enough over the years from the board that this is, we're not talking about doing a new program, and we're not talking about going into every classroom and saying you have to stop what you're doing and totally do something different. Right now, especially at K one-two, all of the K one-two teachers should already be using Hagerty. So the question that the group had and wants to make sure is happening is how are we monitoring that? How are we making sure that is happening consistently? And the word Melina keeps using is with fidelity. And also making sure that the kids that haven't mastered those skills, K one-two, that the teachers three through eight know how to support that better. And so this has really come up, I can speak on behalf of the junior high, because, and Melina's at the junior high, is, you know, we, we really have struggled in that our language arts teachers are, are prepared to teach literature, when you think about it. At the secondary level, when you were in junior high, I know when you were in junior high, was, you know, we would read novels, we would discuss novels, we'd read poetry, we'd discuss poetry, but it's difficult to do that when we also have kids who are significantly below grade level and then may need the phonics support and how to do those basic reading. So you know, that's really what we're talking about is how do we ramp it up? And so a lot of this is kind of ongoing. At Ader, we've got all of our language arts teachers plus special ed teachers going through some basics, like how to be a reading teacher 101. There's actually a much more official name than that, but Kellen Syrock and Vicky Cox are helping facilitate that with all of our teachers right now. So I just gave a long answer to it, something that wasn't the question. But hopefully giving you all some context.
Anybody else have any questions?
I do, Bill. You know, I always do. First of all, I, I'm going to have to disagree a tiny bit in I'm going to have to disagree a tiny bit in that if Michael Hagerty is available, then I don't think you tell K through three teachers or K through two teachers, use it if you want. I, I think we have to have some kind of a systematic way the children are learning to read. As far as the literacy part goes, I, I went across this whole state for five years, teaching balanced literacy to grades K through nine. It's great. And that can be implemented at any time, at any grade level. You could do a guided reading session with kindergartners and with ninth, eighth graders or seventh graders. But I think we have to say, here is our phonics program. Please be familiar with it. Bring in Michael Hagerty. I used to run into him all the time in conferences I was giving. Have him give some instruction to our staff. Pull in some of the retired kindergarten, first, second grade teachers. They used it. You know, I, I, it just really seems to me we have to stay uniform in that if our children are going to learn phonics, they have to have a system to use, not pick and choose for various systems.
That is the recommendation.
Okay.
I, I have a question. Well, it's not really a question, just rambling. If we start concentrating on the, the use of the Hagerty phonics and so K, K through five, shouldn't there come at some point in time where we reach, I mean, if, if the kids can't read, they shouldn't be in junior, they shouldn't be in middle school. I mean, I just don't understand. I can understand right now why we need to focus on it because we have kids that are struggling. But like if we focused on phonics for kindergarten through eighth grade for two or three years, and I know we have an ability issue, I get that. But at some point in time, it seems like phonics isn't something that's normally concentrated on in middle school, is it? Isn't it more the lower grades that it's normally concentrated on?
Yeah, yeah. And our suggestion is that, you know, we want to see that being used uniformly in the lower grades. There will be students, of course, that come into sixth grade that have dyslexia, have reading difficulties, those sorts of things. So it's important that our sped teachers, our reading interventionists, our SLPs, those people know how to work with kids who have those serious reading deficits, SLD or dyslexia, and can work with them specifically or work with them in a tiered instruction. But yes, the hope is that they don't hit sixth grade and we have eighty percent of sixth graders who have decoding deficits. The hope is that the main group gets addressed in elementary.
Now we have kids struggling across the board, but I would hope that eventually if it was something that we implemented in the lower grades, that eventually our, our kids, by the time they reach middle school are reading at a, a more appropriate level for their grade.
Primarily the teachers will be focusing on that reading comprehension piece. And that more complex reading skills. Yes, that would be the hope.
And I just want to make sure that, because you know, I actually, and I think all of all of the board does thinks that our teachers are always doing what they can. That's their best for our students. We have, we do have a fifteen percent mobility rate, which is nearly three times as high as the state average. So every year, one out of every six children who was in our district, whatever year, one out of every six children enrolling in our district is new to our district. And so over the course of K through eight, you know, I would imagine we could find the data that shows the kids that we've had K through eight are probably doing pretty darn good. And darn well, excuse me. But we, we also just, you know, part of it is, is we have to continually be able to bring kids in to the loop and, and work on addressing the gaps that they have. And definitely there are kids that we do have year to year that have gaps. Anybody else have any other questions?
Actually, I thought the majority was higher than fifteen percent. So thank you.
It's typically been close to twenty. And last year it dropped to fifteen. So I don't know why.
I think the presentation was very well done. I'm impressed.
Thank you very much.
And now we get round two, their second recommendation. All right. And this is going to be Dolores Lloyd, who is a teacher at Pleasant Acres. Are you there, Dolores?
Yes, I'm here.
All right. Tell me when to click.
Okay. So the next problem that we looked at is low academic achievement. So there's a significant difference in academic achievement in English language learners, students with disabilities and black students. According to this, this graph here, the information you have here is a percentage of students who achieve proficiency on the Illinois assessment of readiness test. And that is a test that's taken each year by students grades three. And so when you look at this, it shows the blue bar represents our English language arts. So that's the reading test that students are taking. Our white students, fourteen percent of our white students score proficient. Whereas our black students only approximately six percent score proficient in English language arts. Hispanic students about four percent and then our English language learners about two percent in English language arts. In our, in the area of math, white students approximately thirteen percent are proficient on the Illinois assessment of readiness. For the black and Hispanic students, only four percent. And for our English language learners, approximately three percent score proficient on those assessments. Okay. Next slide, please. A possible solution would be project based learning. So project based learning is a teaching method where students learn by actively engaging in real world and personally meaningful projects. Project based learning is a student centered pedagogy that involves a dynamic classroom approach in which students acquire a deeper knowledge through active exploration of real world challenges and problems. Problem based learning is an instructional approach designed to give students the opportunity to develop knowledge and skills through engaging projects set around challenges and problems that they may face in the real world. It offers critical thinking. It's career oriented. It's a type of functional learning that is student led. It promotes language use because students work in groups. Schools based around project based learning have been shown to have a positive effect on academic performance compared to traditional classrooms. Next slide, please. So what does project based look like? Well, in a project based learning classroom, the teacher is facilitating the instruction. So the teacher is kind of the side is the guide on the side, supporting students as they learn. They provide background information and provide resources for students to research a specific topic. Students explore content and they have choice in what they explore. Students are presented with a real world problem and use their knowledge to respond. And students have choice in how they demonstrate their learning. Whereas in the traditional classroom, the teacher is the center. She's the focus. The teacher delivers the content, the students read and respond to the content. And then the student is tested on specific knowledge of the content and students may have an opportunity to complete a project at the end of a unit. Next slide, please.
And I just want to add that we're not saying that the traditional approach to teaching is wrong or incorrect in some way. We wanted you to compare so that the board would be able to understand what we kind of mean by a project based learning classroom. Sorry, I cut you off.
No worries. Thank you.
Yep.
So a project based learning school outperforms traditional schools. So in a new study of two thousand three hundred and seventy one third grade students, project based learning raised average science test scores. And when they looked more closely, the data revealed that the students also had a high improvement in reading levels and they outperform their counterparts in the traditional classroom. So this graph shows in the percentile groupings, the growth that students made. So third graders exposed to project based learning performed eight percentage points higher on science tests. There was an increase in the social emotional learning in the areas of reflection, collaboration and ownership. These effects were replicated across differing racial and ethnic groups, household incomes and geographic locations. The gains made on science assessments and social emotional learning were shown to be consistent regardless of reading ability. And in your package, you have additional research studies for various age groups. You have for the middle school level as well as high school. So this method of instruction is not just focusing on, and the research doesn't just focus on elementary. It expands across all educational levels. Next slide, please. So the possible solutions to improve the fidelity of implementation of research based, project based learning programs across KH such as defined learning. As a district, we currently subscribe to the defined learning program. It's a platform for providing project based learning to classrooms. The RCS instructional advisory committee will form a project based learning subcommittee tasked with overseeing project based learning within the district, identify successfully implemented schoolwide project based learning problems in other districts and partner with those schools or districts. Kankakee School District is the closest one in our area that is already using and implementing project based learning. Adapt a timeline, scope and sequence to implement project based learning in RCS. Next slide, Pete, please. And so our recommendations for the district are to provide professional development for all staff on how to implement project based learning. And that's utilize the defined learning platform to to the best of its capability at this point. It's a really great platform that we already have access to. So using that with fidelity in the classroom. Instructional advisory committee will create a subcommittee that will monitor the implementation of project based learning, which will direct the following. Construct a timeline to phase in project based learning into all core instruction. Overseen the implementation of project based learning. Review student data, data quarterly to determine success and additional instructional supports that may be needed and seek out partnerships with local colleges, organizations and businesses that support project based learning. Next slide, please. And so the board action request is for the board to direct the superintendent to continue district wide implementation of project based learning programs with a timeline sequence and a scope and sequence, excuse me, and plan to implement project based learning and update the board at least twice annually on the progress of implementation.
Thank you, Dolores. Couple of things I, that came up in my brain when she was presenting. Frequently you might hear the phrase problem based learning. Also, along with project based learning, there is a difference. But really, from my perspective, I'd be thrilled with either. And oftentimes they overlap quite a bit. Defined learning is a program that the district already has and that we've been using. Interestingly, the Kankakee District, it's committed as a project, a PBL school also is using that as their primary resource, the defined learning tool. This year, we've done some projects, but Dolores, was your, did your class do the candy project with the tech specialist? Was that you?
No, that wasn't us.
Okay. Was it at your school? No, I'll just be quiet.
It was probably third grade, the third grade team.
And so there's been a tech integration specialist has come in and worked with some teachers. But the dream, I think of this social equity group is that project based instruction becomes the norm and it becomes the way that the schools operate. And not just an event.
Oh, no, I apologize. You're right. One of the things that we did is the candy and the kids actually, they're in project, project, they had an opportunity to actually print out in 3D format, the candy that they created.
Ooh, but they didn't eat it.
No.
It was plastic. So, all right. All right. Any questions from the board? I did bring in Mr. Williams. Kevin Williams is here. I just saw him on the other side. So, but he was not one of our presenters. He is part of this group. Any board members have questions or anyone in the group have anything to add? I see, I can see one hand went up.
Yes, I'm directing the superintendent to continue the implementation. I guess I want to ask a couple of questions. You don't have to answer them, but are we going to consult the teachers in any of this and see what? If we have any teachers that are already have knowledge of these programs, what is your timeline going to be? It's not going to be happening next year, I assume. Because we have to have training and a number of other things before it happens. So I guess what I'm thinking is how many, what are you thinking down the road? Just tell me, not next year, maybe the year after?
So, so one, one thing to mention is it is happening, it, project based learning is occurring. It's just kind of like, like the reading, it's not consistent across the board. In kindergarten, that's what they're doing a lot of, project based learning at the kindergarten level. And various grade levels do a week of project based learning versus it being like a three week process, which is what project based learning could essentially be. Okay. With in the week, at the fourth week.
Yeah, I use project based learning and in my teaching, the only, I, I sort of tweaked it. I didn't let the children design their own projects because they came up with some really crazy stuff. I had a whole list of things and if they wanted to do something different from the list, then they could come and describe their project to me. But yeah, it, it's a wonderful program and I totally agree with it. I just, I just don't want to walk up to the teachers and go, this is what you're doing and you're doing it now.
And Ms. Fitzgerald, giving your students that list is, is what we're talking about. You gave them a choice. As a teacher, make it totally open ended, right?
Yeah.
So, um, so there is, and Amy Blomberg's on here. And if you're comfortable, Amy, do you want to share what the elementary principals have been working on? The way I phrase that, you don't really have a choice to, but.
Um, yeah, just incorporating more of this into our schools, exactly what we've been talking about, trying to, Joan, what you talked about as well. Trying to get the train in there. We do have the platform and Jen as well has got a team now that she's going to start for defined learning and they're going to take a look at it and really become experts in the field. And then they're going to share that with the teachers so that we can get the professional development we need. And really trying to incorporate more of this within our buildings.
Yep. And all, it's interesting.
Love you, Scott. It excites the kids no end. And again, a great program. I just don't want to blindside our staff. But it sounds like it's not going to be a blindside. You have talked about it and approached them about it.
And just last week, Jenny, Jenny Ferricks asked the principals to help start forming a teacher leader cohort, which is what Amy was referencing. And what I have found interesting this year is that in my principals meetings is all four of the elementary schools are doing these things. And what they're aiming at getting is strengthening, strengthening it in the four buildings. And this action item, I think from the board puts the strength of the board behind it to say, this is something as a district that we do want to move toward. Timeline, yeah, it's not, it's not the first day of school. Next year, everybody does it all day long. The, it'd be great if things in schools worked that quickly.
Right, I'm all in the dark here.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Again, a great presentation.
I know, they're pretty darn good, aren't they?
Wow, I'm impressed.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right, if there are no more questions from the board, I'm going to let Nikia move Amy, Dolores, Melina, and Kevin and Nikki over to the other side. But thank you, five of those five, and Ms. Mahaly, who's not here this evening, for all of your work on this.
I was just going to ask you, any other board members? I can't see if anybody else has any questions or hands up. Any other board members have any questions or comments? If not, then, thank you, Dolores. Thank you, Melina.
Have a good evening. Thanks.
All right, then. So does anyone care for more discussion? Or would they care to go on to make the motion to, to approve the social equity working groups recommendations? The recommendations we're talking about are the first one, which is insurance, ensuring that the district implement a district-wide systemic phonics instructions program. And then also to the board implements the project-based learning program.
I would be pleased to make the recommendation that we instruct the superintendent to work on the phonics part and the project-based learning.
Okay, so Ms. Fitzgerald made the made the motion, and was that Sandra Ullot?
Yes, it was.
And Sandra Ullot seconded the motion. So now we're ready for a roll call vote.
Keys.
Hi.
Fitzgerald.
Hi.
Robinson.
Hi.
Ullot.
Hi.
Brotherton.
Hi.
Graham.
Sorry, Annie didn't hear that.
Hi.
What?
Hi. And before I tabulate the votes, if we could, for the record, Mark, if you could announce it, how you're attending this meeting, whether you're in person or remote.
Mark Keyes attending remotely.
Thank you, Mark. So it looks like it was unanimous. So that motion carries and the social equity group recommendations are approved. Move us on to item number eight. It's an action item. It's, it's the reopening plan updates and remote running guidelines for the school year 2021, 2022. And superintendent Ms. Ramage will do the presentation.
Yes, all right. We have, I think, seven or eight slides tonight. So I always start out with a general update. We've talked about this the last board meeting. So the junior high will have saliva testing, hopefully starting next week. I know there's a walkthrough tomorrow, I believe. And we have 110 students that gave consent, well, their parents gave consent for them to participate in the saliva testing for COVID. Students that are in sports and extracurricular are, we've determined and decided that we won't mandate that testing. So I do know that we're reaching out to those parents to ensure that they still do want their children to be involved in the saliva test. Eighth grade promotion ceremony is March 20th, I'm sorry, May 20th, at the sports complex at, I have March written in there, but it is May. At 5:00 at the sports complex. Obviously, due to COVID, we would not be able to fit in the gym and hold the ceremony there. So we will have more details as the planning progresses. And the last one is IESA announced no sectional or state track meet. You could have sectional if somebody was able to run that. We will not have a sectional. And then it just thought this was an interesting recent change is that students who are actively participating in the sport outdoors do not have to wear their mask. So that's while they're, you know, physically active, you know, they're out in the field or they're running a track event, they do not have to wear their masks at that exact time. Next slide. So it's just a little bit of student and staff COVID data that I always provide. Since January 19th, that's when we returned from winter break. We have had 174 days that staff have not been on campus. And of those 74 days, staff were unable to work, whether they were too ill or that position does just, does not allow them to work remotely. Since January 19th, again, we have had 41 student positive cases and six staff positive cases. Since the start of the school year, we've had 45 staff cases. Rapid testing, this is an estimate as of a couple of days ago. We have seen an increase in this, in students using the rapid testing. And we believe that that's because we recently had a change where the negative test result was acceptable and they did not have to get a PCR test. So 85 students tested so far with four positive results. 24 tested staff have tested with zero positive test results. Next slide, please. Our safety measures, I just wanted a moment to brag on Jenny Ferricks, Shannon Clark, our facilities director, and our whole facility staff. As you know, the safety of our students and our staff is, that's a very big part of, of what we do. And we believe that we've been doing it very well. Last month, CDC removed their recommendation for Plexiglas. So just imagine if we had decided to spend a large amount of money on Plexiglas between desks and what would we now do with all that Plexiglas? So thankfully, we, we did not do that. Another device that many districts are purchasing is, is a type of ozone generator. It's a, or a UV light. So it's expensive, very expensive. CDC recently also stated that it may be risky or ineffective as, as a cleaning device. The EPA cannot verify if or when it is appropriate to use these devices. So the best for cleaning, what have we done? What, what are we proud of is, is not only just the cleaning that our staff does, our facility staff, but also ventilation. That has been something that our staff have heard over and over and over again. Just ask our teachers, how cold is their room in the winter? Or even now, because it's a little chilly in the morning. How cold is their room when they arrive? Those windows are opened, our facility staff walk around and open all those windows in the morning. And teachers can come in and close them if they're cold. We do have a fan in, in every room. And then those windows are opened back up again for a little bit of time in the afternoon. So we are continuing other ways to improve ventilation. But we're very proud of, of the work that has been done and the team effort of our custodial staff as well as every staff member in our buildings. Next, please. Later on in your board agenda is the annual approval of our amended 2021 calendar. And included is that, included in that is a change for the end of the year. It's a year of changes. So Thursday, May 20th, instead of the 21st, will be the last day of school for students. That evening and then the following morning, we will collect devices from our learned families. So we have Chromebooks, iPads, hotspots, chargers, headphones. We have a lot of devices out in families. And those, remember, our learned students are the ones that are remote learners. So we need an opportunity for them to return the devices. So we would like to turn that into a fun event. And the teachers want to say goodbye and see their student in person. So hopefully that will be a fun event to encourage families to bring those devices back. Unfortunately, devices not returned and/or damages that have occurred, incurred fees not paid, that will result in a delay for registration. So we do, we do understand that families struggle financially. And we have no problem setting up a payment plan. And that's a pretty easy thing to do. You just simply call the school and talk about a payment plan that will work for you. We have so many Chromebooks that are damaged and we're concerned about what, you know, with all the new Chromebooks, I mean, the Chromebooks that are out there returning, how many more damages we'll have? And we need our devices taken care of. Next one. RCS summer school updates. So we have three summer programs that are happening on our campus. There's transportation for the program at Broad Meadow and East Lawn. So I'll talk about the Broad Meadow program is K through five. And that is the Dream House. We've worked with Dream for a few years now. They obtained the 21st Century Grant. And they are able to provide for our Broad Meadow families, six weeks of full-day summer school for 74 students, which was, that's right at their capacity. 98 students were targeted and 70, 70 was capacity, so they're at 74. East Lawn will be the location for the other three elementary schools. And because research shows that targeting the younger grade levels, K through two, that is what we are doing, that will be an AM program for four weeks. And transportation will be available for that program. And transportation is available for the one I talked about at Broad Meadow. So about 25% of those students that are, that were targeted are attending. So we targeted about 384 students. We were hopeful for about 200, and we have 93. We wish that we could offer it for all of the grades, K through five. Going through this process, finding enough teachers just to cover our 93 students, although we wanted 200, was challenging enough. Teachers are tired. It has been quite a year. So finding teachers who are able to do that in the summer, this year more than any other, is more challenging. So we would not have had enough staff to be able to do K through five. Obviously, summer school is not an option that very many families favor. Or at least that four-week program for morning only is not a summer school option that very many families are considering. And then the last is the program that we've had for several years now is the Boys and Girls Club at, that's held at JW Ader for incoming kindergarten through eighth grade. And that is five, eight, eight in the morning to 5:30. And that's about 11 weeks, June 1st through August 6th. And they do not have any busing for that program. Next slide. Everybody wants to know, what are we doing in the fall? We are still working on that. We do anticipate full days, five days a week due to the change in the CDC, social distancing now three feet apart. They do want six feet when possible, but three feet is acceptable. So, so what are the things that we're still working on? We are spending a considerable amount of time, believe it or not, on mealtime. And I think if you asked any district, that is what they're spending their time on. Why? Because you have to be six feet apart for meals. You take off your mask, you have to be six feet apart. We are, we're contemplating all kinds of ideas. Alternate locations for them to eat in the building. Are there some buildings that don't have that, that need tents? Will need some heating units? So we're, we're trying to not allow meals to be the reason that we can't return to all in person five days a week, full days. So we're continuing to work on that. Another area that we will work on next is busing. Right now, 50 students is the maximum on a bus. So we probably will have to order more buses and find more drivers. That's, that's complicated because it's not as if, when, when you route students to ride a bus, you do not know how many are going to get on that bus every day. Everybody who lives more than a mile and a half has that right to ride that bus. And we can't tell them that you either only ride the bus or you don't ride the bus. They have to have that option every day. And it's really hard to pinpoint exactly how many students will be on a bus. So we'll be working on that. One of the concerns that we have is that students or classes may end up quarantining more often due to being less than six feet. We have done, and teachers and staff have done an extremely amazing job. I have said this before, where our students are staying, staying six feet apart. So if somebody is a positive case, we generally do not have to send students home. It's just not a common occurrence. It will likely be a pretty common occurrence next year. If they are only three feet apart. Because the rule for being in close contact is still six feet apart. So how does, what does that look like? How do we treat that? If they're at home for 10 days, but they don't have a device? So there, there are all these particulars that we have to work out. We do anticipate presenting a full plan to the board for approval in May that will include hopefully some of the solutions to these concerns, but more details about our plan for the fall. Next slide. Addressing unfinished learning. This is the new ISBE term, I think, that you will start hearing about. We've been calling it learning loss. I believe that the shift will change to the words unfinished learning. We are currently working with teachers and specialists to discuss creative and effective ideas on how to address unfinished learning. Specifically, we're talking about intentional, small group instruction in addition to what they already received during the normal day. ISBE dictates that we must address this minimally for a year. So we're looking for some creative ideas for a year. Then we can assess that at the end and see what the staff and the teachers think. But right now, it is just a year. So everybody is going to be creatively problem-solving through this. There is a meeting on Monday that will do exactly that. So here is what we already do know. Summer school is, 25% are interested in summer school. I don't believe based on that, that Saturday school will be any different as far as interest. That's an idea that some districts may do. We've had struggles with our after-school programming and attendance at our, at those programs. Extending the school day. So therefore, I, I, I don't know that extending the student day is something that would be effective. So those are some solutions. I don't know that those are creative solutions, but those are some solutions that some districts are doing. You will start to hear about that and read about that if you haven't already for the fall. Next slide. This is our last slide. So remote learning for 21, 22. This is something that we felt we needed to move on a little bit sooner before we present an entire plan to you because ISBE is requiring remote learning exist next year. But it will, it can and will be for very limited reasons. The medically at-risk students, a student who is in a household with a medically at-risk person, and/or a student who repeatedly presents other health and safety risks such as repeated refusal to comply with social distancing or wearing their mask. So we do reserve the right to revoke approval of full-time remote learning if the student is not successful. That's a little bit different than this year. This year, if the student didn't do anything on the computer, we did all the things in our power to get the student to engage in learning. But there wasn't a lot we could do because the state said, if you want remote, you, you can have remote. Now there's a little bit more involved in that process and when we can approve it and when we can revoke it. So obviously, the most important is that we want all students to be learning. And if they're working remotely and not learning, they're not logging on, they're not doing the work they need to do, then obviously we'll have discussions and potentially we could bring that student back. We also reserve the right to require recertification of any medical documents during the year and assign any student to full remote learning for the repeated health and safety risks during the year. This would be for a semester. And then if we need to, we would recertify again for second semester. So this is basically a semester at a time. We would like to get this information out to parents as soon as possible because it takes time for parents to get the medical information that they need. And we don't want to, we want to just ensure that they have plenty of time to do that. So if we get this information out in the next couple of days, then on June 15th would be the deadline for parents to notify RCS of their, of their intent for remote and to give us the medical information that we need. And then by July 1st, administration would inform parents of the decision, whether they are allowed to work remotely or not. There is no action that's needed. I left it as a There is no action that's needed. I left it as an action item. As always, just in case there's something else that the board comes up with. I didn't feel, I changed my mind about remote learning since this is really the information from ISBE that we don't really need to have board approval for, for us to send information out regarding remote learning and collect their medical information. And this, this piece will be, will be a part of the whole piece of what we provide next month for next year's whole plan, the whole reopening plan. So you will see this pop up again. This is really us letting you know, we're going to send information out to parents so they can get working on that and that they know that this is an option and how limited the option is. And know by July 1st what, what the, our response is to their request. That's a lot of information. Questions?
Any board members have any questions, comments, or concerns?
I have one. Why would you refuse their request?
Um, I, I, I can't imagine that if they brought forward a medical reason or for that, that we would deny it. But we always have the option to be able to deny that. And it's just, this is some language from our attorneys. It's actually where we, what we did and we went through with that. I, I would imagine if we have a student who is in a home, but not themselves medically at risk, somebody at home is medically at risk, and we have proof this year that that child has not engaged in any learning at all, that could be an example of us saying, hey, we're going to give it a try maybe for a month. But if, if you're not, if your child's not learning, we're going to pull him back in. That could be an example.
Okay. I was just trying to think of one and I couldn't.
Yep. Good question.
Anybody else have any other questions, comments?
I'd like to make a comment. It's about something on page one. About eighth grade graduation. I think it's great that we're going to get to utilizing the sports complex for eighth grade graduation. My only concern was about how that came about. We as board members aren't supposed to do anything that's a conflict of interest. And code of conduct for members of school boards off of IASBs. Item number two is, I will avoid any conflict of interest or the appearance of impropriety which could result from my position. Will not use my board membership for personal gain or publicity. So I understand that a board member took it upon themselves to suggest that we do this. It just gives the illusion to other board members that the appearance of this was, it's not proper. And my concern is that for our new incoming board members that were possibly recruited by said individual, think that this kind of behavior is okay. I do support it, but as a board, we gave the direction for eighth grade graduation to the administration. And we as board members are to not interfere in the day-to-day runnings of the district, including making decisions as to where eighth grade graduation is going to be held. That is strictly an administration decision that we as an entire board gave to someone. And once again, it grieves me to know that we have one individual board member who I've had to talk to about this before, took it upon themselves to approach the principle about this. I'm, I'm just bringing up my concerns. I hope our new incoming board members will go to the IASB website before they're sworn in and read the code of conduct for members of school boards. Because even after two or three years, we still have board members who don't understand that there is a code of conduct. And the code of conduct does not mean legal or illegal, but it is a code of conduct of ethics. And I hope that the weather is beautiful on the 20th. I hope it doesn't rain on them and I hope it's not too hot. Thank you.
I would like to just add one small piece to Sandra's comment. Not only what she said is very accurate, but when one board member goes to an administration and tells them what idea they have, he is speaking for the whole board. And that is not to be done ever. You must talk to other board members and say, I would like to go to the administration and tell them this idea. Are you in approval of it? You cannot just go, you're a board member, you're speaking as a board member. And that means you're trying to speak for all of us when none of us have been informed about this. And that, again, is inappropriate and has happened before. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments or concerns regarding the item that's before us? If not, then there's no motion or anything that's necessary. Because we're not taking the action on it. So we can move on to item number nine. It's an action item and it's about the COVID saliva testing agreement with the U of I. And our superintendent Miss Ramage, you ready?
Yep. We've, we've talked about this for quite a bit, for the last couple of months. So it's just the formal agreement. Do you have any questions for Scott or myself?
Any board members have any questions or comments, concerns regarding the formal agreement?
And I'll share that we are scheduled to meet with them tomorrow to actually do our final, or not, do a walkthrough. We'll test some staff members and assuming they have all the technology in place, we will start testing students next week.
All right. Thank you for that information. If nobody has any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the, the agreement, then would someone care to make the motion to approve the agreement?
I just wanted to say, we still have heard anything. As far as we know, this is still just for this current school year, correct?
Correct. Yes.
Data for a couple of weeks, are they?
Yeah. Yep. Agree.
Thank you, Sandra. Anybody else have any questions, comments, or concerns? If not, then would someone care to make that motion? Who's, who's, who is this? Is that John?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Brotherton was going to make the motion to approve the COVID saliva testing agreement with the University of Illinois. So do we have a second?
I'll second.
Was that you, Sandra? Okay. Cause you're coming in kind of delayed. Okay. So motion by Mr. Brotherton, seconded by Ms. Yulot. Sorry. And we'll need a roll call vote, please.
It's Gerro.
Joan, are you still with us?
She just texted me. She lost her internet, so she's working on it.
Okay.
Graham?
Hi.
Brotherton?
Hi.
Robinson?
Hi.
Keys?
Hi.
Yulot?
Sandra, you were called.
Hi.
And Sweat?
Hi. And did Joan ever get back on?
Not yet.
All righty. So we have six in favor and one no vote due to technical difficulties. So that motion carries and the agreement is approved. Next item is number 10. It's an action item. It's a tentative budget amendment. And that's going to be presented by Kendra Good, our finance manager.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you go to the next, please?
Oh, Scott, okay. Um, you don't have.
Don't have my spreadsheet?
Oh, no. All right. Why don't you talk about it, Kendra?
Oh, I can talk about it. Okay. Yeah. Sure. So ISBE requires we do a budget amendment if we spend over 10% in any fund. And we need to do this because we did not budget the remaining health, life, safety funds we had, a balance from last year of $18,000. A little over $18,000. And we did spend that and our balance is zero now. So that's what we wanted. And then we won't be levying for that fund anymore. And then also, we have to, our budget has to match when the auditor comes. So we have to make sure those numbers are the same. Really, the only major changes were food service. Since we're not providing as many meals, we're not getting as much reimbursement. So I lowered the revenue for food service by $564,000 and reduced the expenses by $224,000 because we have less food cost. So the net change in that is a decrease of $340,000. And then grants, the revenue increased by $595,000 and expenses increased by $634,000. So the net change is a negative $39,000. But that was expenditures from last year's grants that we didn't pay for until after June 30th. So it was in this fiscal year, but we already had the grants. So that's pretty much it. We still have healthy fund balances. About $14 million for all funds at the end of the year. So it's still looking good. It's just a legal thing we have to do. And then we'll present the final one if there's any changes in June. Which, if we get any of the new Ursa money by then, you might see some big changes. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Kendra? If not, then Kendra, thank you for presenting, presenting this budget amendment to us. And now it goes before, if the board, the board didn't have any other questions or comments regarding this, then would someone care to make the motion to approve it?
I still move.
Okay. Was that Sandra Yulot? Okay. So Ms. Yulot made the motion to approve the tentative budget amendment. And we'll need a second?
I seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Robinson. And we'll need a roll call vote, please.
Brotherton?
Hi.
Robinson?
Hi.
It's Gerro.
I guess she still hasn't gotten connected.
Yeah, there she is.
Yes. I don't see her. Oh, there she is. Hey, Joan, you were called. We're on the tentative budget amendment. And we're, the motion's been, there's been a motion and a second. And you've been called to see how you voted on it? Can you hear?
I don't think she can hear us.
She can't hear.
Just want me to go on then?
Yes, just go on.
Okay. Graham?
Hi.
Yulot?
Hi.
Keys?
Hi.
Don't forget Sweat.
Oh, sorry. Sweat.
Hi.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I was tucked at the very bottom. I missed it.
All right. And Joan, we still can't hear you? Can you hear us? I guess not. So we look like we have six in favor and one no vote due to technical difficulties. So that motion carries and the tentative budget has been approved. Next is item 11, which is an action item. It's a non-CBA collective bargaining agreement, personnel and administrative wage increase for 2021, 2022 school year. And was it Linda Waterston, our HR manager, will do the presentation? Linda, you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. For the 21, 22 school year wage increases for non-CBA personnel and administrative, a 3.5% increase is recommended for non-association ESP employees. The RCESPA currently has a 3.5 increase. A 3% increase is recommended for administrators with no multi-year contracts. Those who have multi-year contracts already have the 3% increase unless they are on the retirement track. A 4% increase for cooks and head cooks to keep in line with the minimum wage increase mandates. And those are going to, the minimum wage increases January 1st of 2022. Other increases for the minimum wage mandate would be substitute secretaries, substitute cooks, substitute custodians, and social work interns to $12 an hour.
Anybody have?
Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Linda? Doesn't look like anybody had any questions. Thank you very much, Linda, for your presentation. And that means now it's in the board's hands. So need any more discussion or is someone ready to make the motion to approve it?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the following increases. 3.5% for non-association ESP employees, 4% for cooks, head cook, 3% for administrations with no multi-year contracts, and $12 an hour for secretary, sub-cooks, sub-custodian, social work intern as presented for the 21, 22 school year.
All righty. So Mr. Robinson made the present, made the motion. Thank you, Joe.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Graham. And we'll need a roll call vote.
Graham?
Hi.
Yulot?
Hi.
Brotherton?
Hi.
It's Gerro.
See, I guess you still have technical difficulties.
Keys?
Hi.
Robinson? Sweat?
Hi. And it looks like six in favor and one no vote due to technical difficulties. So that motion carries and the increases have been approved. This was on to item number 12. It's an action item. It's the 20, excuse me, 2020 dash 2021 amended calendar. And that's going to be presented by our superintendent, Ms. Ramage.
All right. We alluded a little bit to this in, earlier in the agenda in the presentation about reopening. So currently, May 21st is the last student attendance day. Districts are allowed to use five, what are called, remote learning planning days. And we have one more available to us. So we are recommending that Thursday, May 20th, be the last day of school for students. And then that evening, as we talked about, is that from four to seven. And in the morning, from eight to 11, the learned students will return to vices. Staff will be there for that. And then staff will be finished at noon on May 21st. So that is the change to the calendar. And again, we do this every year where the board has to approve the amended calendar. So any snow days that we have, for example, those are on, those are the part of the changes as well. Questions?
Anybody have any questions? Comments, concerns? If not, then would someone care to make the motion? Okay. Sorry, Sandra, you had delay. So Mr. Robinson was beat to the punch. So Mr. Robinson made the motion. Ms. Yulot, would you like to second it then?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, that came in quick here. Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Robinson, a second by Ms. Yulot. And we need a roll call vote, please.
Yulot?
Hi.
Keys?
Hi.
It's Gerro. Sorry. Graham?
Hi.
Robinson?
Aye.
Brotherton?
Aye.
What?
Aye. And that's six in favor and one no vote due to technical difficulties. Therefore, the motion carries and the calendar has been amended. This was on to item number thirteen. It's an action item. It's memorandum, memorandums of understandings with the RCESPA and RSCEA and RCS. And that'll be presented by Superintendent Ms. Ramage.
All right, it is the year of MOUs. So there are three different topics. One is RCS, RCESPA. This is the pathways to special education teacher. It is the same language you saw last month, only now it is also including RCESPA. So we do have one teaching assistant that has a teaching certificate, and she is pursuing this avenue after approved tonight. The second one is, you've seen this come through a few times over the last year. We are, although not required any longer, we would like to continue to have available that paid leave for identified COVID reasons for the remainder of the school year within the parameters of this MOU that is before you. We are not recommending that we're going to use extended or emergency FMLA any longer. If there is a need for leave, emergency COVID leave can be used. So if the employee has used all their leave, then of course they would then move to using their own paid leave, like sick leave, personal leave, or vacation when applicable. And the last one is on MOU for pre-case stipends. And that's all I have for MOUs tonight.
Any board members have any questions? Comments or concerns regarding the three MOUs that have been presented before us? Then if not, then would someone care to make a motion to approve it? To approve them?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Brotherton made the motion to approve the RCSEA slash RCESPA slash RCS memorandum of understanding for pathways to special education, extended COVID leave, and pre-case stipends. Anyone care to second?
I second it.
Seconded by Mr. Robinson, and we'll need a roll call vote.
Robinson?
Aye.
Brotherton?
Aye.
Ullot?
Aye.
Keys?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
What?
Aye. Hey, Ms. Fitzgerald, can you hear us now? Can you speak? Okay, so it looks like it's six votes in favor, one no vote due to still technical difficulties. So the motion carries and the MOUs have been approved. Next is item number fourteen. It's an action item. It's positions and job descriptions. And our superintendent, Ms. Ramage, will do the presentation.
Yes, I'll just start us off first, and then we'll move to Scott and Allison as well. So I just have one to talk about. We're recommending for next year, two additional full-time teach, substitute teachers, and this would be paid out of local funds. At this time, we do not have a full-time substitute teacher in each building, so we would like to have one in each building. And then we would also have one full-time sub, additional sub to cover staff while they attend IEP meetings. Scott will speak next.
And I think I have A and B, correct?
You have two.
Yeah, you have two.
Yeah.
Okay, good. So one, the first position there is the district family community liaison. This is something that has clearly come up as a need in our district. And the role of this person is to serve as an advocate for parents, facilitate registration into school, serve as a translator for our district, Spanish language translation. And also, there is a new requirement from the state that we have a certified translator for IEP special education meetings. So initially, we anticipate this person also serving in that role. That is paid for out of ESR funds initially. The nut letter B is the curriculum and professional development teacher leader. So what this is, is we have seen a significant increase in the amount of grant funds that the district has received, which has substantially increased the amount of administrative oversight needed to facilitate those grants. This year alone, we've see, received millions of additional dollars through the federal government related to COVID. And these are pretty big, pretty big things to make sure we're managing effectively. So one of the things we want to do is bring someone in who can take part of Jenny Frerick's responsibilities in terms of helping facilitate curriculum and professional development in our district. Another task this person would have next year is helping to facilitate with the remote learners who we will have, which will be a much smaller number than this year, but still someone, someone as a teacher has to oversee that. And obviously, this person still reports to Jenny Frerick's and is very much involved with Jenny. But we do need to provide some additional support with everything that's been coming in.
And then according to my, my agenda, do you have one more, about two custodians with ESR funds?
I'll, I'll go ahead and just jump in, and we are looking at potentially adding one to two more custodians with the ESR funds when students return full-time next year and staff. That's, that's, obviously, we have an increase in cleaning for COVID. Right now, our, our staff are only there half a day for the most part. So we're a little concerned about that increase in expectation for our cleaning. And that's why we're looking at, one of the reasons why we're looking at adding one to two more custodians, using the ESR funds for that as well. And then I believe Allison is going to talk about two other areas.
Yes.
Good evening. I apologize. I think there's a lag in my internet, so I hope you, hope you haven't been waiting for me long. So the first position that I would like to talk a little bit about is this gen ed social work position. So as a district, we do have currently special ed social workers. So our current social workers who are amazing and have done an incredible job. They are very busy with our students, with IEPs and providing services for those students. Through the ESR grant, one of the expectations is that we're taking into consideration the social emotional needs and the mental health needs of our students in response to COVID and the pandemic. And we would love to see a gen ed social worker who can come in and work. This person would be targeted specifically at the elementary and work with students, providing social emotional lessons in the classroom, working with small groups, possibly even doing some individual counseling and skill instruction with our, all of our students at the elementary level. I think it would be a wonderful step in the right direction. As I mentioned, our, our special ed social workers would love to be able to provide this service. They're just, their workload is too great right now. So that's, that's the first position. And then the next one would be our nurse. So two years ago, we had a retirement and we were able to replace her with a nurse who was part-time. And it worked out that she was only on campus when the students were on campus this year. And in preparation for next year, we would really like to and need to bring her back on full-time. You know, assisting with the COVID testing and the monitoring and all of those pieces, we would like to add her back on full-time. And that would be with local funds.
Okay, alrighty. Any board members have any questions, comments, or concerns to address to any one of these presenters regarding these position and job description recommendations? No questions, no comments, concerns? All right then, would someone care to make the motion?
Bill, I'll make the motion. But could I inquire about Joan and voting no? Does she have to vote no? Or can it be a same vote or because she's not here?
It's just a no vote. It's just, no, it's not a no vote. It's, it's just, it's just a, it's not, she didn't vote no, it's just a no vote. So.
Confusing as well. I, I believe that Joan, I, I texted her a little bit ago. I don't think that she can even hear. So it would almost be as if she's not really part of the meeting, right? So yeah, so yeah, I was confused by that too. I was like, oh, I don't, yeah, so.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
You can't see me. I can't get our camera turned on, but.
That's fine. That's.
Okay.
So we'll just mark that period of time in our minutes that she was not present during that time. So you're right.
Yeah, we can see you now.
It took forever. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Were you able to, were you able to hear what was going on? Because we're on item number fourteen about the position descriptions. And we had the motion to approve them. Mr. Brotherton was going to make the motion. So I just wanted to do here, everything that.
Well, I did not get to hear anything but the last thing she said. But in this topic, I wanted to really, really, really encourage the administration to hire two more library aides. It is a crying shame that we have these wonderful libraries that are only open half-time. And so if we've got the money to add positions, I'd like to add those two positions so that our elementary libraries are open full-time. Okay, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Alrighty, so.
And you know, I think Joan brought up a good point because we're talking about, you know, phonics and getting our kids to read. And one way to get our kids to read more is to give them the availability to have books to read that they'd be interested in. Good point, Joan.
I was going to say.
We do also have technology integration specialist position that was new this year, and it is only for two buildings. But we are trying to hire a second person for the other two buildings. And that person as well does work with the literacy and the technology, the library. So, and it's a licensed teacher. So that has really helped with the increased access to the libraries. So, and it's, and like I said, it's a licensed teacher position, so.
But I want somebody in there telling the children about different books, reading a story to them every week. And you know, saying this book is about this, and this book is about this, and do you think you would like this book? That's what I want.
Well, that's, that's something that they can put on next, next meeting agenda.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Then if not, then Mr. Brotherton, you still, you still make, in favor of making that motion?
Yes, I do.
So.
I'll second it.
Okay, so Mr. Brotherton made the motion to approve the additional positions of district family community liaison and curriculum and professional development teacher leader and their job descriptions. Two full-time substitute teachers, general education, social worker, and increase in nurse and their respective job descriptions. Mr. Brotherton made that motion, and was that Mr. Graham that seconded?
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Graham had made the second. So we're ready for a roll call vote.
Keys?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robinson? Ullot?
Aye.
Brotherton?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
What?
Aye. And we get, did we get Fitzgerald also?
Yep.
Yeah.
Alrighty, so it looks like it's unanimous that motion carries and position descriptions and everything has been approved. This was on to item number fifteen. It's an information item. The first thing is FOIA's, smart procure, the employee time cost, that was eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. The second thing is employee assistance program utilization report for the first quarter. And then three, we have the upcoming dates. And our superintendent, do you want to discuss anything?
Yeah, sure. For right now, April twenty-seventh is scheduled for the special board meeting for the reorganization for our new board members to come in. We do need to discuss or I need to bring, bring you aware that, that may need a possible change. I've been informed that two board members will be at, working at the RTHS track meet that night. I haven't heard back from two board members yet, but to determine what the best date is. But right now, of the five who have responded, the best that we have are four people at once that can attend. And that date and time is either one set of four can meet April twenty-eighth at six, and another set of four, a different set of four can meet on April twenty-eighth at six-thirty. So the guidelines are within twenty-one days of the election to receive the abstract of votes from the clerk. And that would be April twenty-seventh. And then the new board has to be seated within twenty-eight days, and that would be May fourth. So that's the information that I have. I don't know if you want to keep the same date, if you want to change it to the twenty-eighth. Again, I, I haven't heard back from two board members yet.
Well, I was just going to say, as long as we have a quorum which are four board members, we can still canvas the votes and certify, and then, then the new board can come up with a, may have a special meeting before the fourth to get themselves seated.
I can be there. I'm not sure if I'm one of the ones that didn't respond.
I only sent this to the new board because the ones that would have to, I guess, seat, you know, who's president, who's vice president, reorganization. So, so I did not send it to those who were going out.
John, what time does that track meet start on the twenty-seventh? Do you know?
Andy, I think it's probably going to start at four-thirty for field events and five-thirty for track events. But I, I could be wrong on that. So four-thirty and five-thirty.
Michelle, was there any way, could we do it early in the afternoon on, on that day? Maybe if everybody can be around?
Sure, I didn't give that as an option. I can go back and do that.
I, I was just thinking about that. I didn't know if we could all maybe get there in the afternoon that day.
Yeah. I, I could, I could send out another doodle and, and see if, if another, if an earlier time works. Nobody, I don't think anybody picked Saturday. Let me see. I didn't give an option. If Saturday is an option, we can do a Saturday. If that's a better day, I could go back and offer that again. And we don't have to decide at this board meeting. I'm just, I mean, just need to bring it to everybody's attention that we already, we have some conflicts, so.
You're, you're, you're thinking of doing that on Zoom, is that correct, Michelle?
Yes.
So we wouldn't have to.
Unless the board tells me otherwise.
Okay.
And a reorganization is important. You'd want as many people there as possible. Preferably the whole board.
Yeah. Yeah. Do you want me to offer Saturday? Sometimes on Saturday. It's, it's really, it's a fifteen-minute meeting.
Well, could be, but yeah, could be longer, but yeah, I mean.
Could be. Well, you're not talking about a three-hour meeting like tonight, probably.
Hmm. All depends on who prepares the agenda. I mean, it's up to, that's up to the rest of the board members. You guys want to?
How about if I go back, I offer some earlier times, and I offer some times on Saturday?
Well, during weekday, earlier times, some of us at work, I know I could make it.
Right.
Well, I have a question. So you said some can meet the twenty-eighth at six and some at six-thirty?
Yeah, I have, I have.
Well, don't you think that probably the ones that stay six-thirty are because they can't be there at six? So don't you think if you had it at six-thirty, people could be there?
I, I.
The problem about a track meet, right? That's why? Because of track meet?
On the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
Right. And there's no guarantee that track meet is going to be over six-thirty.
No, this is on the twenty-eighth, so.
She's talking about.
For some reason, I have a person who can do five-thirty and six, but can't do six-thirty on the twenty-eighth. If that person could, we would have five of the five who have responded so far. And again, I haven't heard from two. And I gave this information out a couple nights ago. Only, I only gave it to the new, you know, who would be on the new board, so. Um, and I gave this information out a couple nights ago. Only, I only gave it to the new, you know, the, who would be on the new board. So. You know, I didn't give it to Bill or Sandra or Joan or, or Mark. So, um, but I'll go back.
But don't we have to be there initially?
Yep.
Yeah, yes. It, uh, yes, you could be there. It's, it's, it's most important for the new board to be able to be there. If we don't have a quorum of the old board, I did ask if we don't, our attorney, if we don't have a quorum of the old board, we still can meet um, and move forward. Um, obviously ideally it would be great if we did have a quorum, but if we don't have a quorum, we can still, of the old board, we can still meet and um, do the reorganization with the new board. So I really need, I really need a couple of people to respond. That would be very helpful if, if um, all the board members would respond and, and um, so that I would know what.
Well, we still have time, so uh, why don't you wait a couple of days to see what happens and then uh, we go from there.
Alright, sounds good.
Okay.
Okay. Um, more dates, just already know about May twentieth, uh, five o'clock, eighth grade promotion ceremony. May twentieth, that same night, we have a regular board meeting at six thirty. So we'll be at the sports complex and then we'll be coming. I'm gonna guess in person to a board meeting on May twentieth. Um, May twenty-first, I want to make sure the whole board knows we, we are going to be sending this out to the whole community so that they are aware. But we are going to have a retirement celebration drive-through for seven of our staff on May twenty-first at twelve o'clock from twelve to twelve forty-five. So um, Maria McCarthy, these are, this is very important for me to go through these. We have some amazing years of, of experience here that we're gonna mention. Maria McCarthy teaches uh, math at JW Ader. She's uh, been in education for thirty-four years. Jean Lappin, teacher at Northview, thirty-four years. Sherry Moran, teacher at Northview, thirty-four years. Wendy Starwell, principal at PA, she's been in education for thirty years. Linda Revest, clerical at Broadmetal, twenty-six years. Donna Minor, our librarian at um, housed at Ader, twenty-three years. And Pat Kurtz, head cook at Pleasant Acres, eleven years. So that's a lot of um, a lot of retirements years. There are a lot of experience.
Yes.
So those are the only dates that I have.
Okay.
Um, I have one.
Okay.
April twenty-ninth is a IASB division governing meeting.
Hey Sandra, that's, that's.
You guys hear me talk about this unfortunately? Oh, is it? I can't.
Yeah.
I don't have my thing in front of me.
That's okay. Yeah. Uh, back, uh, if, if, if there's north there comes. Number sixteen. We'll move on to number sixteen. Uh, and Sandra? Can you hear me?
Um, yeah, I don't know if you can hear me. I just got the message saying besides myself that my internet is unstable.
You're, you're coming.
Um, so the, the uh, meeting is at six thirty. Wait a minute, I'm looking. Now I take that back. It's six o'clock. Six o'clock and it is virtual. And the board, and I know the new members aren't seated, but I think it would be too confusing to a new board member. Um, the board needs to pick someone as a governing representative. Each school district is allowed one vote at the governing meeting and it will be electing officers. Um, this year, every, every year there's an election cycle, officers re-elected. And there will be, um, the governing board will be voting on the programs that are gonna be offered at the fall and the spring um, division meeting next year. So we came up with some good topics to talk about. So um, I would encourage um, Mr. Brotherton, Mr. Robinson or Mr. Graham to possibly consider being the representative. Because um, I really think you've been to some division meetings and I really think that our new board members would probably be totally lost. Everyone is invited to go. Everyone can attend, but only one person can vote. So you guys just need to pick who you want as a representative to vote. And they would like to be notified. Um, Perry Hill, who is the field services director for the Illini Division, might kind of know in advance who the board has determined and it doesn't have to be an action item. It's, however, the board determines that person is fun. Just let them know. And everyone that wants to attend the meeting still has to register. There will be no cost because obviously there's no dinner meeting, but they still want people to register.
Okay. Anybody else have any que, uh, anybody have any questions or comments? At this time?
Is this, are we just making comments for general comments from the board?
Yeah, general comments for the board.
Is there someone though that's gonna represent RCS at this meeting that I can make sure we let uh, IASB know? Or I can sign you up for you to be in attendance at this meeting? I didn't mean to cut you off, Joe. I just wanna make sure we don't forget this piece.
Uh, no problem.
Okay.
I don't care. I haven't talked to John or Joe about it and I'm, I'm willing to call both of them and get back to you within twenty-four hours, Michelle, if that's, that's what you wanna do.
Sure, good idea. Thank you. Okay, Joe.
Okay, um, just uh, something that was uh, mentioned to me and uh, Michelle, you mentioned it earlier about um, Dream. And um, just something I just wanted to um, also uh, mention is that Dream is, is looking for um, enroll, enrollment for eighth graders for the transition to uh, eighth grade. Um, also, uh, it's a uh, two-week program. And uh, I, I think it'd be a really big step to help the uh, the eighth graders transition, transition into high school. And um, the other part is um, the academic support um, that is gonna give for, well, ninth grade and twelfth graders. Um, it's called Dream Big and it's at Rantle High School. So they're still looking for uh, students to get enrolled in it and people that are interested in it, they can go to the Dream website at uh, www.dream.org. Or they can contact Sam Hall.
Alright, Joe, thank you for that information. Anybody, anybody have any questions or?
No, uh, I, I do. Um, my wife's cousin's husband, very little passed away recently and their family and others have donated very generously to our schools over eight thousand dollars. And there'll be a presentation tomorrow. I believe it's twelve thirty at Northview. And I, I just want to make sure that became public. Um, it's, it's a donation for kindergarten through second grade uh, students. And they'll be given books and those books will be actually, actually their books. They can take them home. My wife's cousin's husband Barry uh, did a fantastic job at Broad and or reading to the kids. And um, I just think this is a great honor. I just wanna make sure that, that the board uh, recognize that and um, and that the public is aware of it now. Thank you.
It will be reporting on that. And thank you very much, John. We'll be reporting on that next month. Um, but yes, Emily Little, who I believe is a daughter-in-law, maybe, um, used to work for our district. And um, she's, she's been instrumental in working with um, Kelly Mahoney, principal at Northview to um, make this all happen. So I, I want to thank both of them for that um, and for the event tomorrow. And um, and, and that they thought of all of our elementary schools. So that's, you know, all of our students. Um, and those grade levels will benefit from that. So um, that I'm, yeah, eight thousand dollars is, that's quite a donation. So we're very lucky. Students are very lucky.
That's an amazing gift and what testament to what a wonderful family they are. It's amazing.
And John, could you please pass on to Glenna and the kids how appreciative everyone is? Uh, I know Barry uh, was always a um, proud volunteer in many aspects in this community. And it's a, just a continuing volunteering to our community. So please pass that along to.
I will do that. Thank you.
Glenn and the kids.
I will do that tomorrow when I see him.
Uh, any other board member have any comments?
Uh, I just uh, got one thing. Uh, Joe made me think of it and I'm not even sure, but uh, Michelle or, or, this might be for Shannon or Jennifer or whoever. But Sam Hall through the Dream Pro, also offered a jobs program. I think he's gonna do that again. And uh, it's a jobs program to get the kids uh, some job experience. And I don't know if the city schools could use any extra help in the summertime uh, doing things. So maybe that's, might be also something Michelle or Scott or uh, Ms. Ferrex that we could look into helping place some kids in our uh, helping the janitors and stuff around the buildings during the summertime.
Yes, yeah, we're, we're aware of, of that program and we work hand in hand with Dream. So absolutely.
Okay. Alrighty, um, anybody else have anything for the good of the board? Okay, then if not, we'll move on. Um, if you recall, we uh, we uh, removed items number seventeen and number eighteen from the agenda. So uh, this moves us on to items number uh, nineteen and twenty. And uh, before we uh, proceed with those, uh, the reasons for items number nineteen uh, and twenty is as follows. This is a joint statement between the board and uh, Michelle Ramage. This is at the Rantle City Schools, with the RCS Board of Education. We wish to thank Ms. Ramage, uh, our current superintendent of ten years uh, for continued outstanding service to our schools and community. Uh, at Ms. Ramage's uh, suggestion, the board discussed and agreed to a timing change in the transition plan leading up to the, her retirement in December of two thousand twenty-two. Our new superintendent, which will be Dr. Woods, will begin his superintendency on June first of two thousand twenty-one. For now, um, until December thirty-one to twenty twenty-two, uh, Ms. Ramage will serve as a central office administrator to assist with the transition and remain a supportive role in our district. Uh, this plan will ensure the stability for our students and staff and places our district on a path towards continued success and growth. This change will now coincide with the change in the board as well as the start of the new school year. It allows for a smoother and clearer, uh, clearer transition uh, at the start of the school year rather than uh, mid-year shift as originally planned. So these next two items are gonna be uh, approving contract amendments for both um, uh, Ms. Ramage and uh, Dr. Woods. So this moves us onto item number nineteen with an action item. Would someone care to make a motion to approve the amended employment agreement um, as a district administrator?
I made the motion. I'll second it if you wanna give it to Mark.
Okay, okay. Mr. Keys made the motion um, to approve the amended agreement to employ Ms. Ramage as district administrator. And Mr. Graham seconded the motion. So we're ready for a roll call vote.
Graham.
Aye.
You lot?
Aye.
Brotherton?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Keys?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
What?
Aye. Okay, and that's unanimous. So that motion carries. So that contract amendment has been approved. And uh, this moves us on to item number twenty. Would someone care to make the motion to amend uh, the, the amend, uh, contract amendment for uh, Scott Woods to be superintendent for Rantle City Schools effective one? Okay, Mr. Graham made the motion. And. Joan, did you second?
I did, but I think Mark did too.
It, it's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Alrighty, so Mr. Graham made the motion, seconded by Ms. Fitzgerald, and we'll need a roll call vote.
You lot?
Aye.
Keys?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Brotherton?
Aye.
What?
Aye. And it looks like it's unanimous that motion's carried and um, that contract is amended. Uh, Scott Woods to be become superintendent effective one June of two thousand twenty-one. Uh, before we proceed, uh, Dr. Woods, would you care to make any comments at this time?
I probably should have had something prepared. Um, no, but thank you to the school board and uh, Mrs. Ramage for um, giving me this opportunity. I think um, the transition process that we had laid out was um, accelerated to make this possible because of COVID. Um, that Michelle and I have been working along with the rest of the district leadership team um, very closely um, this year uh, to get things uh, moving, especially around COVID. So um, thank you, everybody. And I look forward to continuing to work with Mrs. Ramage. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alright.
Comment, Bill?
Here can.
I would like to say that um, since this is my last board meeting with Ms. Ramage, that it has been an honor and a pleasure to work with her. That as a board, I feel like she has done everything we have ever asked of her. Um, I think she is a professional. I think she will help make Scott a great administrator. And I just wanna say thank you to her.
Alright, Joe.
And I would like to say that when I was president and hired you, it was one of my proudest moments, Michelle. I'm gonna miss working with you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
But you can write it, you can. I know where you, I know where you live. God bless you and Scott, the best of luck to you.
Alrighty, so uh, we'll move on to item number twenty-one. It's an action item. It's a administrator credit card approval. Uh, Ms. Ramage?
Yes, last item for the night. Um, Samantha Sebastian will be our new PA principal, Pleasant Acres principal. Um, Heather Jacobs, who will be our new Ader principal. We need board to approve five thousand dollars each for them on their school district credit card and an increase for Scott Woods to ten thousand dollars and then to remove me from district credit card. So that's um, the motion that I would need um, recommend to the board.
Okay. So uh, the board members have any questions, comments, concerns? If not, then would someone care to make that motion?
I move that we allow credit cards to be up for the two new principals and take Michelle off that credit card. And let's give Scott ten thousand dollars.
Okay, so um, Ms. Fitzgerald made the motion to approve Samantha, how'd you say your name? Is Sebastian?
Sebastian.
Sebastian, I hope I said it right. And Heather Jacobs for five thousand dollar credit limit cards. And Scott Woods increased to ten thousand dollar credit card uh, and remove Michelle Ramage from the credit card effective one July, excuse me, one June twenty twenty-one. Who seconded?
I will.
Miss uh, you lot seconded and we're ready for a roll call vote.
Robinson?
Aye.
Brotherton?
Aye.
You lot?
Aye.
Keys?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
What?
Aye. And it looks like it's unanimous. Uh, motion carries and so you're gonna want to make those changes as of one June. And just I brings the item number twenty-two, uh, action item is adjournment. So I take it, who's gonna make the motion? Sandra, you lot?
I, I can do this after twenty-one years. After twenty-one years, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
I second.
Love you guys.
Alright, motion made to adjourn by Ms. You lot, seconded by Ms. Fitzgerald, and unfortunately I cannot use. And unfortunately, I cannot use, uh, unanimous consent, so we have to have a roll call vote.
I'll try and make it fast. Robinson?
Aye.
Brotherton?
Aye.
You lot?
Aye.
Keys?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
What?
Aye. And it looks like it's, uh, unanimous to adjourn this meeting. Before we go, uh, to all the board members, uh, it's been great serving with you guys over the years. And, uh, I'm really gonna miss this, but we still have one more meeting to go, so hopefully everybody shows up so we can say our goodbyes in. To the public, thank you.
It's been a pleasure, guys.
It has.
To the public, thank you for attending this meeting.
It's been an honor to serve the community.
And without further ado, I say this meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much. You guys, be safe. Good night.
Good night.